We're gonna bring this meeting order at this time. We're gonna ask Commissioner Hollingworth to say the prayer and the pledge.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for all the things you've done for everyone in this room and everywhere in Columbia County. Uh, we pray for our soldiers overseas. We pray for our police officers. We pray for our politicians, that they can do the right thing to make sure that this county is covered in every way that we can. And I know you've got us anyhow, even if we don't. But there's been some deaths here in this county in the last, well, couple of years that really rocked this community in many, many ways. Loved people that really cared about our community. I just want to comfort those families and know that they're in a better place, looking down, smiling. In Jesus' name.
Amen. May they be allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, his republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless. I want to thank everyone for coming out to this, uh, July 20th, 2023 Columbia County, Board of County Commissioners Meeting. Uh, David, did we have any additions or deletions to, uh, the meeting?
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, uh, one deletion, item number six, uh, ordinance number 2023 dash zero nine. Uh, after further review, there are some changes I'd like to make for that. Uh, so we will renotice it and have it on a future agenda.
Item number six, okay. Um...
Also, Mr. Chairman?
We'll put in that, Joel?
Yes, sir. We'll pull it. We'll put it on a later agenda.
Okay.
Motion for approval agenda.
Oh, also, Mr. Chair, we have a couple. We have four additions. Uh, time-sensitive nature, uh, because we got them so late, but they need to be done quickly. One is the reclassification of the position from Extension Agent Two to Extension Agent Three. Second one is the JAG grant agreement request by the city that they need us to sign off on. They have to have it done before the end of the month, and of course, we don't have another meeting except for this one. Uh, then, you know, we had the utility committee yesterday. There may be any updates, so that, you know, if we do put that on there. Then finally, I just want to give you an update on the budget workshop dates. And in your packet also included the DR 420, which talks about the property balance.
And that's the, that's the budget?
Yeah, that's, I'll talk about that when we do the budget workshop.
Okay, so all of these will be under you, David?
Uh, sure.
So we'll just add them to the end of you. It'll be, uh, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Okay. All right. Uh, anybody else? Is, is, that's all, that's it for the additions and deletions? Uh, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion approved.
Got a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like, say? Motion carries. Oh, I have a request, uh, for announcement for the basketball, for the basketball game. If y'all want to come up, you can do that this time. Bring the kids up.
Thank you, board members. I appreciate you giving us a few moments. Um, I'm Steve Faulkner, the athletic director and boys' basketball coach at Columbia High School. And I'm coming to invite you guys and the community out to our Boots and Badges game. You know, the annual, annual event that's been happening the last several summers. Well, now it supports the boys' basketball program financially with whatever proceeds come from the event. So we wanted to kind of give it some pub and invite all you guys to come out and enjoy that day. It's gonna be on August 12th. I've got plenty of flyers. I can leave y'all with some.
And who's gonna be playing?
It's, we've got the county and the city fire departments, LCPD, Columbia County Sheriff's Office, and the clerk of courts. We have those five groups. Um, it's fun. It, you know, from a basketball guy sitting back and watching these guys play, it's, it's been a lot of fun the last few years. That's why I've been glad to be a part of it. And now it's gonna be at our place. It'll be at Columbia High School on August 12th. So I just want everybody, you guys included, to come out and support. Uh, and so it's a fun day. I think, in fact, the Lake City Heat is gonna have one of the little young fifth grade teams gonna play in the middle of it. So it's gonna be a really cool community event. And, you know, for me, it's gonna help support these guys, these guys that we try to work and find some funds to be able to do things for them during the season.
And the date?
August 12th. And I can leave y'all some flyers.
What time?
Leave it here. I'll leave y'all a handful of it.
August 12th, it's a Saturday.
Next year, you have the city versus the county.
Is that what you want? We can add you two next year?
Come on, don't you get up and say that.
Hey, we, we could take more. I know that they were looking, uh, between Chris Kraft and Scooter, they've been looking for more teams, so we can add you guys whenever you want.
Mr. Chair, there's, there's five commissioners and there's five council people. I think you got a basketball guy.
As long as they don't hold fouls against us, we'll be good.
If our court could court.
I don't think we keep track of personal fouls, so you get as many as you want.
Personal fouls don't matter when it's the clerk of court.
He makes plenty of money. We need, we need.
Me, Mr. Kenny, will be the referees.
That sounds like a fun day.
Well, thank you, guys. We appreciate if you can make it out, come out and support. It'd be a fantastic day. And I, once again, appreciate y'all giving us some time to, to tell you about it.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Okay. That sounds like a fun time. I hope everybody comes up and sees that. Uh, Mr. Swisher, you got a presentation?
First of all, I'd like to say that we have a few more open positions. If any of y'all would like to play on the courthouse crew though, there, uh, we can probably post a field you up under the basket there. You probably wouldn't have to, uh, to run a lot.
Jay, I'm worth, I'm worth all my personal fouls. I'll, I'll have to sit.
Get a field in for us?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Dale's open that morning, that afternoon. Okay, he's got. I will be there.
Commissioners, uh, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Previously, I've stood up here and told you of problems that we've had with some vendor payments checks in the form that they've been stolen out of mailboxes, um, and also some fraudulent duplication of checks, uh, over the last, uh, a couple of years. And although we're comfortable with the controls that we have in place, we're constantly asking ourselves, how can we, uh, do better? And so that's kind of what I want to talk to you about tonight. Uh, last year, we printed, uh, our office printed over 6,000, uh, checks to vendors on your behalf for services rendered. That's 6,000 opportunities for checks to be lost, stolen, or fraudulently duplicated. So when working with our financial institution this year, uh, First Federal Bank, uh, we believe that in October of this year, uh, the start of the next fiscal year, we'll be in a position to be able to offer your vendors the opportunity to do ACH pay, to receive ACH payment or direct deposit payments. Um, the benefits, uh, to this, other than a much more secure method of payment, um, is that the accounts will be paid, the, the accounts are paid, or the, the, the invoices are paid much quicker as well. My, my finance office operates on a two-week schedule. Week one, we do payroll. Week two, we do accounts payable. On accounts payable week, on Wednesday, we print checks. On Thursday, we verify, we validate through our positive pay system. We stuff those checks in envelopes. And then on Friday, we deliver those checks to the post office. And then they're usually delivered the following week. We can cut out a lot of that. Our goal is to have those checks deposited into your vendors' accounts on that Thursday of the accounts payable week. So in some cases, a full week earlier than what they're receiving their, their payment now. Um, this, um, and, and also, they won't have to go to a bank to cash a check or deposit a check. Um, and there's no extra cost for this. In fact, we believe that when you calculate the, the cost savings from the checks being printed and bought, uh, the envelopes and the, the manpower, it could be close to $10,000 to $12,000 annually that we're gonna save the county in, in this method of payment. Although it's our strong desire to get as many vendors as possible signed up for this, we know that there are probably some unique obstacles that, uh, are gonna be there, uh, that may prevent some from getting, uh, signed up for this immediately. That's why it's our goal in the first year to try to get 75% of your vendors signed up for this method of payment. And then as we, then we can work through some of those individual cases and see if there's any obstacles that we can overcome to, to get those, uh, to get, to get them onto ACH. But we understand that there'll probably still be a handful of checks that will, will need to be printed, and we will totally, and we will continue that service as well. So I wanted to address, uh, that with you tonight, uh, because in the coming weeks, we're gonna be sending out a notification letter to your vendors. And that might generate some questions or comments to you. So I wanted to let you know that that's coming. And feel free to share the information that I provided with you tonight. Also, you can tell them to contact my finance department, or they can contact me directly. So with that, I'll take any questions you have. But I wanted to bring you up to date on, on where we're moving.
I can't imagine it hadn't been done before because it's, I mean, because we have times that vendors will call, "I ain't got much," you know what I mean? Kevin Kirby, Kevin Kirby, we'll have to cut his pay. We, we can cut Kevin's pay,
but, you know, he ain't gonna have much work to do.
Exactly. We, we really think that once they see the benefits of this, that most of them are gonna want to jump on this.
Yeah, that's a big deal.
I, I think it's a great idea. I mean, it's, everybody's gonna get paid sooner. I'm gonna tell you, it's direct deposits, really the way to go.
Way to go. Absolutely. Yep.
I, I still write checks, but I'm about to fall over there and go.
Yeah.
Get it done, Jay.
All right. Thank you.
Good deal.
Good deal. All right. Uh, Ms. Tammy Magstap? Report on Richardson? Or update on Richardson?
Yes. Good evening. Okay. Um, I think you have a couple sheets. Uh, I was just gonna give you a little update since June, when we've kind of taken over. Uh, we had summer camp going, and it, the last day of that is tomorrow. And we had a director for that, an assistant director, and an assist, uh, let's see, director, assistant, an aide, and a custodian. That was through that six-week program. And it's gone great. Like, um, Ms. Nicole Callum was the director. And she literally, she did things with the kids. She took them on field trips, but she baked bread and made ice cream and did academic programs. They did crafts. So that was a plus. It, it really turned out well. Um, another thing, we had, um, we have the pickleball, cornhole, volleyball, Erdimax, those programs going through there. And then, um, we just started last week. I think Hands of Change have come and talked to you a little bit about wanting to do programs at Richardson. And we had them for their second time today. And they're actually doing programs with the kids where they're having motivational speeches. And then like today, they were gonna actually make stress balls. So, I mean, they're, they're gonna do like a four-week program. We're gonna see how it goes and then go forward with that. Then, uh...
Who, you said, Ms. Magstap?
Hands of Change. It was, uh, Azzy Handy's in part of that, but it's Hands of Change. They had come and talked to her and said, "Hey, we wanna do things with the kids and the community." So we sent them up. She's come here before.
Azzy was the, she's a tall lady?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I just didn't understand, but I remember.
Right. And, and that was just one that had come before you saying, "Hey, we wanna do stuff at Richardson." Well, we got them doing it. And they've got like a four-week pilot program that we're testing out, seeing how it goes, seeing how many kids are interested, that kind of thing. So now, some of the future programs I listed, it's things that we're talking to people about. Um, Florida Gateway, Travis George, is working towards this e-gaming, which that's the thing that's showing like $12,000 to get set up. He's talking about getting that started and doing that with the kids. That's just some of the programs. And, um, oh, okay. So another thing, I listed the future programs we have going. But another thing of a person that had come here was the Special Olympics pickleball. They're gonna start once school starts, coming on Wednesday mornings. And so we're getting that going, you know, working that in with them. So other than that, I just wanted to see if you, now, if you had any questions.
When? Yeah, go ahead. When are you all going to present a budget?
Well, I gave you the budget that's between the four months. That was supposed to, that was the other sheet.
Gonna be starting over again. When are you gonna hire a director?
Well, we're ready to, but then, but we need the funds for that. And rather than come and say a whole big thing before, you know, the October's the budget, and that's the whole year budget, we've got it ready. We already sat down, figured it out, and we actually had, what we're gonna do, this is how our plan is for the director. We have a, um, one of our, our board members put together what we want and require for a board member. Then we're gonna put an ad in the Lake City Reporter, get the resumes back, go through those, interview them, and hire them. And we're ready to do that. But I, we had to get through the summer. And we had to get through with what we had going and with what we'd had from the county and the city so far. I went to the city Monday night to say, "Okay, um, how about the money that we talked about?" And so, and that's just kind of where we're at. We have to, because you have to pay these people. You have to pay the director. You have to pay, we had, um, three also for the gym this summer. We had two gym recreational aides, and then we had one custodian. And we worked hours, like I said, you can't work over 40 hours. And, you know, they had perimeters. And we have a guy that works nine to six on Saturday. And then we have a gentleman that we hired to do restrooms, outdoor restrooms for the weekend. And that's what we have hired so far.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We've asked all the not-for-profits that usually come by and request money to do it all on the same day at one of our budget workshops. So the reason, uh, their budget request for next year would be at one of our budget workshops.
And, and, and Ms. Magstap, you've already given that budget to David, or you're gonna bring it to that workshop? This budget, is this budget, I'm looking at a budget in your, in your presentation now.
The one for the presentation was just literally May to October, four months to get us this far. And I just, that's why I put the total, um, the $50,000 from the city and then the, you know, the other.
But you haven't received the $50,000 from the city yet, right?
No. And I actually talked to them about that Monday night. That's why I went. And they said that the, the $10,000 of that was from the Lake City Police Department because they were gonna have an officer there. And honestly, the Lake City Police Department has done their thing. They have an officer that comes plainclothes, four to eight, Monday through Friday. And they have actually donated quite a bit on our Fridays. Like, we do Fun Fridays for the kids and do hot dogs, popcorn, snow cones. And they have donated hot dogs like two or three times. So that part, the $10,000, they've done. But the $40,000, what they were saying is they want to put it towards programs. And, which I, I gave them lists of programs, but that's what they said. And, uh, so I have to still keep working with them. But honestly, it gets a little frustrating when you're working yourself trying to get this to work. And, you know, I don't, I'm not gonna go, go to the city, go to the county, go to the city, go to the county, and beg, beg, beg. I just, I was, I was gonna say, "Here you all go. You can have it all."
But Tammy, Tammy, I'm sorry, go ahead, Rob.
I just want to say something. I want you to understand that I know that you'll have certain politicians, you'll have certain people that'll discourage you because they don't seem to respect what you're doing down there. But, you, you know, volunteers like you, if we had 25 of them, we'd be good to go in Columbia County. You know, it's just, you, you, I don't want you to get discouraged because I know you're doing a hard job. And then when you go to a meeting and you're look, you're kind of talked to like you were talked to the other day, it just, you know, I, I want you to know that we appreciate what you're doing, and the people and the kids appreciate what you're doing. Because that's really all that's out anyhow. Politicians really don't matter, truthfully. So us or anybody else. So I, I'm just wanna make sure you don't get discouraged because I know that you do. And, 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 and that's what, and if you leave, it's the kids that suffer and nobody else does. So, but we really appreciate what you do. I just want to tell you that. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
Oh, you're good. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
They are going to present a budget for us during the budget process, am I right?
That is correct.
But until during that time, you have enough funds to keep them operating.
The last thing the board directed me to do was to match what was allegedly the city's contribution. So the answer is yes. Long story short, the answer is yes. We have enough money to make it through October. They are requesting it in draws, and, uh, I think they've made one draw so far. But yes, we have enough money.
Okay. So, so right now, we've committed $50,000. No, we committed 30, but if the city's doing 50, we've committed 50, if what you're saying.
That is correct.
Okay.
And when we did that, Chair, if you may, uh, you know, at the city-county meeting that night, but I guess amnesia kind of put in, come into place, the meeting I watched the other night. I was wearing David out about 11 o'clock. Are, are you listening to what I'm listening to? Because, did I knock David?
You did.
I was just kind of, I was kind of flabbergasted, but it's, uh, but, uh, you are appreciated. I can tell you that, Tammy. I, I've gotten numerous, uh, compliments. And, and, uh, I've been where you're, you're sitting at right now. And sometimes you feel like you're at the bottom of that bucket, looking up. Where's everybody else looking over? But it's, uh, it's, uh, that, that's what separates the, the good from the bad, you know? So it's, uh, we're, uh, gonna do whatever's possible. But I, like Mr. Williams just elaborated, we got enough money to carry through until budget time. And then we put all these things together and see, uh, where and what happens. And, and I, I'm just hoping the other, uh, group will come forth and do what they said they would.
One thing I did want to add to, just as a side note, um, all our volunteers and workers have Level Two background checks. We went through, we worked together with the Lake City Police Department, and they, and I double-checked with one of the lieutenants because someone had asked me saying, "Is there, are these really Level Two?" And I said, and he said, "Yes, they are officially Level Two background checks."
I'm, I'm looking at your, uh, income. Where does the rental to the Port of Community Center, where does that rental money go? Well, there's no rental income in that budget at all.
Yes, that rental income is, now, this is a four-month budget, remember that. But this is amounts we got.
I'm sorry. I, 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 it is in here.
Yeah, it says rental income.
Yep, I got it. I've got it. I see it now.
And cornhole, pickleball income. But those were from rentals, you know, like, um, rentals from the cafeteria and the gym, different things like that.
But, but Tammy, again, this is like for four months, correct?
Yes. We did this in May just to make sure you had the four-month budget.
I know when I spoke to one of the other board members, he shared it with I. And, and I, I thought I picked up on that, but that's, I, I totally understand it.
Right.
Well, one of the things that I, 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 President, determined to do, to do not intermangle the budget, know what money to get through the government, they put that in one account, and the money they generate from the use of Richardson, they put in another account. Then that way, we can see the two.
Know where we're at.
We know where we're at, uh, from those two things, they are doing that. That's, that's a good, that's a good idea.
Well, and we will be able to give you, I can give you updated, uh, amounts each month, exact amounts, because we keep it all separate, so that you know, like, what's coming in from which place.
Any more questions, Ms. Tammy?
I think you're doing a good job there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that's, uh, okay, uh...
Oh, Rocky, I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. The background check thing just came up. I, I, I mean, we know in the news and the city and all that that there's a entity that has decided, for some reason, they don't want to do them, or they, and I, they're, they're, I guess they're, it's their right to do that.
But we could, we could, oh, we require background. We kind of require background checks due to the local agreement. We have the Antimatter.
So they still...
Have to have the background check.
The county policy is to require background checks, yes.
Okay, so they know that that's our policy, and they're gonna go by that policy. Have you sent them a reminder like you told me you were gonna?
I need to send them a reminder. I have not.
Okay. It, it just kind of, it just kind of scares me a little bit. I'm like, wait a minute.
Well, I will say this. I did read the county policy, and background checks are required before anything can be funded. So that's the county policy.
Yeah, and, and to be clear, to your point...
Background checks.
You know, it...
Probably not get funded.
That, that's when you enforce it, Commissioner Hollingsworth, is, is when...
Enforcement is my thing. You know, we have things we're not at out there.
When there's a request for funds, the background checks are verified. If the background checks have not occurred, there are no funds. That was the mechanism that was decided by the commissioner.
I just didn't understand why they didn't want it, why change at the city for some reason. It just didn't make sense to me. Like, if you have to do it, you have to do it. So it's, you know. But it's just that the city doesn't require them, but we do require them.
Yes, sir.
And they, they get funding from us, so they, they have to do it. Okay. Mr. Kirby, uh, if I may, uh, what services do we render still at Antimatter? The mowing acres or what else?
I cannot recall exactly off the top of my head, but as recent as day, there was a request made that did not fall within that contractual agreement. We, we have an agreement that covers X, Y, Z, and it's very clear. By the day we had a request through maintenance who had to do something to a bathroom, they called me, and that was not part of our contractual agreement. I just don't recall. It's three or four things, right off the top of my head. We're very clear. When all this debate started, we reviewed that contract a few months ago, and I met with maintenance, landscaping parks, public works. Fellas, here's what we are responsible for, no more, no less. Call or request made to do X, Y, and Z, we do those. Recent as day, request was made, not called. It was outside that agreement. It's not in the agreement. It's not in the agreement. It's a very clear, uh, agreement, though.
Let me ask you. So like even Richardson or Antimatter, anybody that has funding from the county, when they do the background checks, so they ask for funding, we do background checks on the board and what else, uh, any employees they're gonna employ there. Is that how that works?
We don't do them. We verify that they did.
Okay. So if there's a volunteer that just popped up in a day, and I'm, I'm not saying that's gonna happen, I'm just wondering, are there times that they hire volunteers day of the, the event or day before? You, you know what I mean? I just, I, I, I'm a little worried about enforcement, even at, at any place. Richardson, uh, the, in, any place that we have any, any, um, out at West Side Community, all of them, you know, how do we know? I guess it's up to them to do that. And then if some, something happens...
Our requirements relate to board members.
Okay.
Members of their not-for-profit boards.
Okay.
Because those are the steady people. Now, what they need to do as directors, or from a liability standpoint, is they do need to be checking their, you know, volunteers and employees. But we require those directors.
As long as we have no liability, that's what I'm worried about. I, I don't want them to go hire somebody day before a kid's party or whatever, and something happened. As long as we're covered with that, that's what I'm worried about.
Their, their DNO insurance would, would kick in for that.
In addition, there's state laws that cover that. They need to be in compliance with the state laws.
Good deal. Mr. Waters, Swan Valley Electric. Don't give us an update on our fiber optic project.
Yeah, good evening. Uh, I'm Mike McWaters, and I'm the CEO at Swan Valley Electric, uh, during the daytime. My nighttime job, I am also chairperson of the Board of Managers for Rapid Fiber Internet, our new internet subsidiary that we announced, uh, June 6th of 2022. So, uh, we've been at this a little over a year. And oftentimes, it seems like we're not making any progress, but it's kind of like the duck. Whenever you see him on top of the water, his feet are really getting it underwater, but you just don't see it. And that's kind of, kind of what we're, what we've been doing. But just wanted to come over tonight and give you guys a, a brief update. Uh, our project goal was to provide fiber to the home to every member consumer of Swan Valley Electric, regardless of income, regardless of race. Didn't matter. If you received electric service from Swan Valley Electric, you would receive fiber to the home, high-speed internet, if you so chose to, uh, buy it from us. So that's our goal, and that's our mission. Uh, so far, uh, we're making great progress on that. We're currently in phase one. There's, um, about five steps to each phase that we have to go through. So we go through, we make a design of our fiber network. We do what's called make-ready engineering, where we go out and ride the electric lines to see what needs to be changed in order to accommodate the fiber. We have to cut additional rideaway at times. Then we go through, do, go through and do make-ready construction, where we actually make the physical changes that the engineering folks found. And the last step was that, we actually put up the fiber. And so those are five steps. We're doing our project feeder by feeder from each substation. So this first phase, we have 70 times, we've got to do that process I just described. So hopefully, by the end of phase one, we'll be fairly decent at it by the time we've done it 70 times, I hope.
Learn as you go.
Learn as you go. But, uh, the good news is we're about 70% complete on phase one. So we've got all of our make-ready, uh, all of our fiber design, our make-ready engineering, our, most of our make-ready construction. A lot of that's already been done, and we're ready to start lighting fiber, uh, hopefully within the next 30 days. So, uh, that's our goal. Uh, wanted to kind of give you guys an update as far as Northern Columbia County. We serve about 2,000 customers in Northern Columbia County. Uh, most of those are in phase two. Those customers of ours will be in phase two. Uh, that doesn't mean that we're going to complete phase one before we start phase two. We've actually already started phase two. So we've already started the engineering and design work on phase two. And this will be kind of a cascading approach. Whenever we, uh, when we light our first feeder, as soon as we get to about 80% of what we anticipate, uh, our take rate to be for that feeder, we'll open the next one, and we'll just start opening them all the way through the process. So, uh, our original goal was to do this project in three years. And, uh, we hope to be, uh, you know, ahead of that. We hope to get done quicker than that. So, uh, like I said, most of the, the Northern Columbia County folks will be in, uh, phase two. Uh, we've got, um, three packages we're going to offer. So I know that's the one thing, everybody always, well, two questions. One, they wanted to know is, when am I getting it? And I try to be as vague as possible, so I don't commit myself to something I can't deliver on. Uh, and then we have three packages that we're going to offer to our, our, uh, members. Uh, there are 100 meg, one gig, and two gig. So it's 50, 80, and 100 dollars, uh, plus taxes and fees. Uh, now, that is if you, uh, do automatic pay and, um, sorry, Commissioner, no paper bill. bill, you can't, you can't get that price with a paper bill, um, but that's automatic pay and no paper bill, so it's $50 for 100 meg, $80 for a gig, and $100 for two gig service. And again, this is, uh, it's a pure fiber network, there's no coax, it's, uh, direct fiber all the way to the, to the home, and the good thing about our project, it's going to be community-owned, uh, we feel very strongly about that, so the members of Swan Valley Electric will actually own this asset that'll be in our communities for the next, you know, 50 or 60 years, and we feel like that's a lot better than, um, out-of-state people owning, owning the network, so that's kind of my update, I'd be glad to answer any questions, again, I'll try to answer them as vague as possible if anybody has one, so.
When did Swan Valley start this adventure?
Well, we officially announced June 6th of last year.
Okay, but planning prior to that, I mean.
Oh, that was probably, uh, six to eight months prior to June, so, uh, first of last
Well, I was sharing it with one of the constituents, and he's kind of, he's paying real close attention where you are. He, he moved to Swan Valley, yeah, but I, but I, the, uh, of course, me and him been dealing with this for quite some time, and it's kind of, our, our unique situation is we can look across the way there and see Comcast line, but they don't want to bring it to us, but it's, that's a argument for another day. I'm just curious on that portion of it there, but the, uh, so, in, in parts of Swan County, when can you, not to put you in that spot you were just talking about, but within the next year, you think people will be using your fiber?
Oh, within the next 30 days.
Okay, cool, cool.
That's generous.
Well, I can tell you, if you have one customer in Swan Valley, that's gonna have to have three or four professionals go by there and show him how to use it. It's gotta be user-friendly, right, Ron?
Yeah, it's gonna have to be real user-friendly.
I'm excited.
Yes, sir.
I live in Winfield, so I'm just one of that, uh, factory, and, uh, have to give you your dues. I've been on this boat over 40 years, and every time it clouded up, the lights went out. But now, we can go through a storm, and we still have power. You all have made tremendous progress over the years of upgrading your lives, get them where they don't go out.
Thank you, thank you very much. Hopefully, that's been the last 10 years, that's how long I've been there, right?
I, I was gonna say the same thing, out at my river, at Swan Valley, it, it, it'll go out, but they come, I mean, they come quick, and you don't have people having to call two, two or three hours, they come, because I think those guys are spaced out all, live all around here, so they're, it's, it's their own families, so that's the thing about having a co-op like y'all got, you know, he's not only getting calls from customers, he getting calls from his grandma, you know, hey, get my, you know what I mean, so, if you got a, you know, but, but y'all do a good job, and, and I want to commend y'all on doing this, because there are larger companies that aren't, so we really appreciate y'all, you know, being a smaller company and going out and taking the initiative to do this, it's really a big deal for us small communities.
Sure. Our, our project, I, I didn't mention this, but, uh, one good thing about it, it's about a hundred million dollar project for us, it's fully funded, so, um, we've made the commitment to fund it, and, uh, so we'll, we'll just go through this thing as we get to it, so.
What, what is the process of, uh, y'all being able to take over this out in the Columbia County?
I have a lot of constituents, and I can't explain why Clay Licker will not do fiber optic and all the other, uh, power companies right here doing it.
Yes, sir, I understand, I, I don't want to speak to that, Mr. Davis and I are, are good friends, so, uh, I'll let him, I'll let him answer that question, but, uh, we're just a little different, different environment, where we are a little more rural.
I just, it, it, it's not explaining to me why they would opt out to do it. I talked to them, and, uh, they're not gonna do it.
The 100 million investment that, uh, Swan Valley has in this, uh, is it all the co-op's money, or is, you know, is there a percentage of it, they came with this broadband bill?
That's a great question, we committed, uh, back in June, when we committed to do this last year, we weren't expecting any funding.
Gotcha.
So we committed to spend the 100 million, fortunately, we've been very successful with, uh, the Broadband Opportunity Program and the Broadband Infrastructure Program grants.
Yes.
Uh, to date, we've gotten about 37.6 million in grants.
What is your expected, uh, oh, percentage of hookups? I mean, you, I think you'll do 75, 80%, I mean.
I, I have that number, but I would prefer not to say in public.
I mean, I, I really believe it's gonna be maybe higher than that.
Well, them rates, I can tell you, it's gonna be pretty successful. If you ask a man a question you can't answer, no.
No, let me ask you one question too, just because I'm stupid about this, is it, will it run overhead with the power lines, and then if you have underground, it goes in, or how does that work?
Yes, sir, it will follow the path of the electric.
So it'll go the path on the poles, not in the ground?
Well, both ways, if your electric's underground, it'll go underground, overhead, overhead.
Good deal, thank you.
I don't know if you're familiar.
Pull it through that existing pipe?
We'll bury a new pipe for existing customers, but, uh, any new customers, I don't know if y'all are familiar, our process has been the last, I don't know, four years, probably, we require all new services to be underground, it keeps us out of people's yards and away from the trees, I think everybody likes that. So what we encourage people to do now, if you're building a new house, connect to us, put a extra piece of conduit, a three-quarter inch pipe in the ground while you're building your house, pre-wire it, come by and see us, we'll give you the fiber to put inside the home, and when it's time, we'll pull the fiber to the house and give you service.
Lawrence, Lawrence, that drop it in the hole early is kind of South Seville, doesn't it? Lawrence is our communications director right there, and, uh, me and him and Kevin have had this conversation quite frequently lately, and every, every time we dig a hole, you drop another piece of pipe in it.
That's right.
Makes, makes good sense.
Which was, uh, a lot easier when conduit wasn't so expensive, but, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
It's still a good thing to do.
Yeah, about a year ago, I got my underground pipe, it's nice, you don't have to worry about power poles and all that stuff, and they did a great job, and I hit the thing on my truck to come out and fix it, my fault. Once you get, once you get them hooked, you don't have to worry about rates, you can raise them wherever you want to, because everybody's gonna keep using them.
Well, that, that's one of the other unique things that we're doing, uh, I, I think because we are a locally owned company, uh, we're not doing contracts, we're not doing introductory rates, we're not doing whatever, it's $50, it doesn't matter, if you want it this month and cancel it and come back three months, it's still $50. We're not doing all of the gimmicky stuff, um, it's just 50 bucks.
You showing 18T?
Well.
We sure appreciate you doing.
Yeah, we really do, yeah, it, it's a big deal.
It is, I mean, that's one of, I get more calls about internet than anything else.
It's kind of crazy, little man's doing more than the big man.
And, and unfortunately, we don't have a whole lot of options in Southend County right now, I mean, it doesn't work, it just, we don't have it.
Well, thank y'all for letting me come, and, uh, anytime you have any questions or have people calling you asking, just call me, I'll be glad to, um, call, call folks back and talk to them, answer the questions, appreciate it.
Appreciate it, appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right, we're gonna move on, uh, public hearings. Is Troy here tonight?
No, he's on vacation.
You gonna do this?
I'm gonna cover for him.
Okay, I, I thought he was on vacation.
We have, uh, companion ordinances for the board's consideration this evening, ordinance number 23-10 is a, uh, ordinance to amend the zoning atlas for the county pursuant to application Z-0613. Ordinance, uh, 2023-11 is for the comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use element, uh, to conform with the zoning request. These are pursuant to applications made by Ms. Chadwick on behalf of the landowners. Uh, for the board's information, it's a one-acre tract of property on Turner Avenue in Commissioner Hollisworth District, it's bounded to the north, uh, by Commercial Intensive and to the south by Commercial General. If the ordinances are approved, the one acre will be changed from RSF 2 to Commercial Intensive, so it'll actually make it more consistent with the surrounding uses. Uh, it's bounded on the east by Turner, it'll be bounded on the west by, uh, Commercial General, or there's, excuse me, on, it'll be bounded to the west by RSF 2, oh, well, there it is.
There it is.
So it's a one-acre tract there on Northwest Turner Avenue, uh, there are commercial properties to the north and south, to the west is undeveloped RSF, but board can see that the, uh, the, the surrounding uses are commercial. Both of these requests were approved unanimously by the, uh, Board of Adjustment without objection. Uh, I would ask the, uh, Chair to open a public hearing on ordinance number 20, uh, 2023-10 on application Z-0613.
They will open a public hearing at this time, is there anybody here to speak for or against this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I looked at the backup material on this when it came out, thinking maybe it would have been updated. County spent thousands and thousands of dollars on software, there's no backup information in the agenda packet, no maps, doesn't say who owns the property. This used to be there when Brandon Stubbs was the county planner, I appreciate Mr. Foreman's explanation, but that's not a substitute for having an agenda packet where the public knows what's going on before the meeting occurs. I don't know why this stuff's not there, maybe Mr. Kraus can explain it, there's no map with the other one, the next one, anybody can look at the agenda stuff and see it, I'm not gonna repeat myself, all I can say is, as a member of the public and the media, but as a public, as a taxpayer in Columbia County, I find this very disappointing, particularly being that it was never a problem in the past. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and plus the proof of publication's not there. So there's no posting on, there's no pictures of the signs being posted, you know the problems that we've had with that in the past. Uh, no photographs of the signs, no photograph of the, no, no legal notice, zero zip nada, it's not fair to the public, and it's not fair to the county commission, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else here to speak for or against? We'll close the public hearing at this time. Mr. Hollisworth?
Make a motion and we approve them.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
And Mr. Chair, a public hearing on ordinance 2023-11 on application CPA 0248. You could open a public hearing for that one, sir.
We'll open a public hearing for ordinance number 2023-11 at this time, is anybody here to speak for or against this? Not seeing anyone, we'll close public hearing at this time. Do I have a motion? Come on. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
David, before we move on, where are you with the, uh, where are we at with the possibility of hiring a?
They had interviews today. They interviewed for the, um, uh, planning director, planning position today.
Did they have you today? Good deal.
Chairman, I move we, uh, approve the consent agenda.
Second. Oh. Oh, you removed six, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, six was removed.
Yeah, I guess, I think, yeah, you removed number six. Okay, I got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Second. Got a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Mr. Kirby?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have three items for your consideration this evening. The first item is under your countywide resurfacing program, these projects are in District 2, Thomas, Gabriel, Heflin, and Mapleton, we received two bids, C.A. Boone at 917303, Anderson, Columbia at 85011745. This recommended motion to his war bid number 202305, Anderson Columbia for total bid amount 85011745, and to approve the agreement.
Yeah, I have one comment card on this, Mr. Looker, if you want to come up this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wednesday I was on Heflin, I'd like to know, I, I looked at the backup material, no photographs, once again, there's no anything, this is in your district, it's the first street off of 138.
You want to know where the roads are at?
I know where the road is at, I'm asking what's, I was on Heflin yesterday, there's nothing wrong with Heflin, I'd like to know what's going on. The road is, there's no cracks in the pavement, I'd like to know what part of the $850,000 is being spent on Heflin, which you can't see by looking at this information, and I'd like to know what's wrong with it, plus the other roads, but particularly Heflin, because Heflin got paved with Dewey Weavers, what they called in those days slush fund money, when they repaved 138. And my understanding is from speaking to the people in the area, the reason that that road got paved, because somebody complained that there was dust on their car. Every other, yeah, every other road, if you look at the crossroads that go down to the other road that goes to plantation estates, those are all dirt roads. And the road that fronts plantation estates is a dirt road because it's never wide enough to pave. But my question is, what is wrong with Heflin, and how much of the $850,000, which you can't see in the backup material, it's just not there, once again, uh, what's wrong with that, and maybe Mr. Kirby could explain it, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you recall, we have, and we attempt to do it on an annual basis, or at least every 18 months, we go and grade all of our current paved roads, we try to exclude those roads that are subject for FDOT funding, this is a county-funded program, we dedicate 3 million annually towards it, we do rank these roads, as most of you are aware, we sit down on a couple-month basis, we identify the various roads in the district, we have them ranked number one through 10, one is a road in complete failure, proud to say we have none of those, number 10 is that that has just been paved, for example, in Commissioner Hollisworth District, we just paved a couple roads, it's number 10. We basically focus on number five through two, which are poor-conditioned roads, there are many ways we tackle this, I have a road that is number two, that would require full depth reclamation, six or 700,000 mile, we could capture a road that's a number four, we know we had to repave at 350 a mile, we try to capture that prior to becoming a number two. There is a system, it's in place, it's a science for lack of a better word, and it's equally allocated countywide.
That's what I was fixing to bring up, Mr. Kirby, a lot of people don't realize it, but if you'll resurface the roads before there's structural damage to the lime, lime rock and all that underneath, you can do it for about half the cost.
Almost, yes, sir.
Of having to go in there and build it, or, but basically build a new, uh, uh, subsurface under the road, so, that is our goal through the county, is to get to these roads before there's structural damage to the lime rock and all the asphalt.
An example, if I may, Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Hollisworth District, the roads we just did was a complete disrepair, like a number twos, so therefore, we had to do what we call full depth reclamation, which as you indicated, is hundreds of thousand dollars per mile extra than if you can capture by leveling, paving, or milling and paving. Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, if I may, I'll be happy to provide the list and how we got there. Master this. So I do request a motion, sir.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
But the one thing about the paver system, Kevin, when we, you know, first dealt with it, you know, six, seven years ago, whatever it was, you know, every night we'd put our head down, it, it's worse than it was the day before.
Guaranteed.
You know, that, it, uh, uh.
And we're behind.
Even though y'all do a good job, uh, uh, keeping in mind and upgrading, if you want to say, at the end of the day, it's, I ain't gonna say it's fault-free, but it's a hefty start, and that's, that's definitely where I started with it.
Well, and I will say this.
It works, it works.
Well, everyone has a good experience with paving roads and all, but none of us pave roads, that's why we depend on our engineers and our, our, uh, staff to tell us what roads are, or we need to, we need to be working on.
And, and I, I love that paver rating too, because you can actually, when a constituent calls, well, they paved the road down the road, why didn't they pave ours, you can actually go in there and show them how the roads rate and why.
If I may, Mr. Hollisworth. If I make, Mr. Hollisworth, we just paved, Mr. Hollisworth Road here, skipped the road, paved the road all within a quarter of a mile. Oh, we were deeply criticized for the road we skipped. Reason we skipped it, it did not meet the ranking.
Yeah.
There's a solution to that, Kevin.
It's hard to explain to people, but I think sometimes they think it's like old days back in the twenties or something, where if you knew the county commission got your road paved, that's not how it is in our, in, in today's world. We, we do it based on the condition of the road, the need of the road, and, and it's a, um, it's an important thing. We, we're, we're behind on it, and just because it is a hard thing to stay up with, but.
Well, you know, I think Mr. Kirby's brought this up before. We dedicated three million dollars every year out of the budget to try to catch up on these roads. To try to do it before they have structural damage to, to the.
And you're still about eighty million dollars behind.
Yeah, exactly. So. But yeah, uh, uh, let's, let's move on. Let's move on to the, uh.
Kevin, it's about like paying that compound interest at a pawn shop. You'll never get you.
Bad it. Okay, so thank y'all.
Go for it, Megan Duster Park.
Okay. So back in October of twenty twenty-two, the board approved G M P number one at fifteen million thirty-seven thousand dollars as a for your wastewater treatment facility. March of twenty-three, you approve G M P number two for twelve million nine hundred and eleven dollars. G M P number one was basically all the civil work. G M P two was the very capturing the majority of the structural work. That time, told you we would come back with G M P three, G M P number three. That's what we're here doing tonight. A total of three point three five nine six fifteen to give you a maximum price not to exceed of thirty-one three oh eight sixteen. The intent was this, just like your jail project. We know we're not going to exceed more than that bottom line number. This is your final leg of paperwork to get where you're going, board. I'm requesting a motion to approve G M P or guarantee maximum price number three in the amount of three million three hundred fifty-nine thousand six hundred fifteen dollars.
So move.
I don't have a comment card on this, Stu. Do you have anything to say on this?
I don't.
Were you giving him notches?
He spoke everything else. I mean, he had some.
Stu looks like he's sitting over there rocking it to him.
Before we vote on it, I'd like to just tell everybody. We've, uh, we've already got all this money allocated to do this with, so we need to go ahead and put it in there where we can get it done.
Mr. Phillips, the reason we broke it into three guaranteed maximum prices to total your thirty-one billion is we wanted to get started. We didn't have the funding in place to get the whole thirty-one. And for legality purposes, the purpose of the three phases, but it still gets to where you're going. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? I, and I'd agree with Mr. Phillips. Look, this is gonna be very important to the future of Columbia County, and I think it's gonna be, uh.
It's gonna be a big thing.
Just a few years, we're gonna be reaching the benefits of it.
Well, I am pleased to say I was on that job site this morning, and it is going excellent. It's a big project, but it's going real good. Okay, uh, the third item I have, preliminary rate resolution number twenty twenty-three R thirty-five. This is your solid waste collection and disposal services. Last year you were at one ninety-eight oh six. Requesting a motion to adopt the rate resolution number twenty twenty-three R thirty-five using the current solid waste assessment of one ninety-eight oh six for the upcoming fiscal year.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Kevin, on your way back, I got a report, uh, I shouldn't say report, but some very, very positive comments on the project you were just alluding to. Superintendent out here sounds like he's doing us a real good job. It, it just makes you feel good that, you know, he's looking at the taxpayer's dollar like we are.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, these, basically, these preliminary rate resolutions come from the master service assessment ordinance that was codified in chapter ninety-four, article two of your ordinances, and was established. So basically, these are setting the preliminary rate resolutions. The final adoption of these rates will come at the first public hearing in September. These are setting the preliminary rates. So for, as you know, you have several assessments for neighborhoods that have requested improvements. The first one is Carolyn Heights, street lighting improvements. No rate changes requested. Generate the same amount of revenues. We're requesting you approve resolution twenty twenty-three R twenty-nine.
The move. Second. Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
So if I, if I'm on this water system, if I'm looking at it.
It's street lighting.
Street light.
Oh, right, street light, okay. I'm gonna hit the wrong one.
Yeah, we don't have any special assessments for water systems right now.
So we all get charged seventy-four dollars to have a street light?
Each parcel.
Each home, that's what they're paying.
Let me, let me, let me state exactly the truth. Each home that benefits from the street lights get charged. So if you have sections of the subdivision that are not lighted, they would not pay into the assessment. Property has to benefit from the improvement.
Fireflyer light came in and did a survey of the subdivision, and they determined where the, where the streetlights needed to go. And it was voted in by the, by the.
By the community.
Of that subdivision. Yeah, I know when I put my subdivision out there, I put streetlights in it, and it was billed into everybody's lot bill that they paid that lot bill.
So these typically are where they didn't get them when they were, when they were built, and they've asked us to come in and put them in after the fact.
Yeah.
And so we assess them on their taxes.
All right, good. We got light.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
The next one is Emerald Lake Street Lighting. Again, not asking for any rate changes, same amount of money. We're asking for approval for twenty twenty-three R thirty.
So move.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
The next one is the preliminary rate resolution for Laurel Lake Street Lighting MSBU. Again, no change, same rate, same revenue. Asking for approval of twenty twenty-three R thirty-one for Laurel Lakes.
The move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
The next one is for Spring Hollow Street Lighting Subdivision MSBU, twenty twenty-three R thirty-two. Again, no rate change, fifty-five dollars per dwelling.
The move, Mr. Chairman. And this was the first street lighting district we had in Columbia, Spring Hollow.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
None.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
The next one is Pine Ridge Court. This one's a little different, um, but again, we're not asking for any changes from previous years. Same rates, no changes. Uh, this one, we actually had to do capital improvements. For all the capital improvements we had to do, we're charging ninety dollars and ten cents per dwelling in it. And then there's a second part of the MSBU, which is for one hundred and thirty-seventeen for the maintenance of Pine Ridge Court MSBU. And we're asking for approval of rate resolution twenty twenty-three R thirty-three.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Finally, the preliminary rate resolution for the fire assessment. The ordinance you have in the agenda packet is one that reflects.
Resolution.
Resolution, I'm sorry. You're right, it is a resolution. Preliminary rate resolution twenty twenty-three R thirty-four, Fire Protection Services, is to establish the fire assessment for next year. This is the max, whatever you approve today is the maximum that you can charge going into the budget. What you have in front of you in the agenda packet reflects the current fire assessment. Now, last year, the board talked about wanting to increase it a little bit every year incrementally so you don't have a big increase in the future. If that's something the board wishes to do, we have a different resolution that you can adopt, but the resolution you have in front of you is for the fire assessment as it currently stands.
I, I do not want to get in that position since last year, where we didn't, we didn't, bump it a little bit, and then when we needed to bump it, it was a big bump, and still a gradual bump. So it's something we need to think about. We want to bump it a little bit.
So you have a different one you can show us here tonight?
It should be on, Joel. So it would set it at the maximum you could make it, which would be what the assessment study said last year, which is significantly higher than what the board adopted. But that is what would be advertised in your trim notices.
But we can move, we can move it down.
But you can always move it down, you can't go up.
Yeah, let's do that.
So at this point, I'll refer to Joel.
Are there, are there any other copies of it, or just the one I've got?
Uh, there should be more copies on the desk somewhere. Kevin, are there some, you know, at least some by my desk?
The backup is incorrect. That's what, was what we're talking about. Um, so in your backup material and the chart that's indicated that you can see here, uh, you've got those rates, uh, single-family mobile home, two sixty-nine ninety-eight, multi-family, one forty-eight forty-nine, land less than a hundred and sixty acres, uh, three dollars and one cent per, uh, per parcel, uh, the per acre rate for excess of a hundred and sixty, less than six forty, and then your non-residential, uh, rates. The, uh, table that was proposed would increase two sixty-nine ninety-eight to three oh one ninety. This is supported by the study, but understand you don't have to go all the way up to these levels, okay? Study supports three oh one ninety for single-family, one sixty-six oh five for multi-family, three thirty-seven for land less than a hundred and sixty acres, uh, three point four two cents per acre for land over a hundred and sixty, under six forty, uh, thirteen point four three cents per square foot for commercial, five point three six cents per square foot for industrial, and fourteen point five four cents for institutional. So you can see those increases. And again, those would be your upper bounds if you approve this as amended. I'm reading you something that was presented by Ms. Antonosa this afternoon.
If you would, email us a copy of that.
You actually have a copy of it in the ordinance that is in your packet? So if you look on page A three in your agenda packet of the fire assessment, it shows that schedule of values. What you're saying is instead of electing the schedule of values that's on A two, you want to impose the schedule of values that's on A three and amend the ordinance to reflect that change. Or amend the resolution.
Resolution.
Yeah, amend the resolution.
But you said this, uh, okay, so this backup one in here.
Yeah, it's, it's in there. It's in there. If you turn to your backup materials, K J two and A three.
The one I just read to you is the one that's in the second chart.
Okay, so we have it, okay.
But again, it's gonna be important to amend, to reflect that you are choosing that, that higher schedule of values.
Okay, I got you. Okay. We have one comment card on this, Mr. Looker. Come on up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I didn't expect to be back up here, so I'm a little confused. Mr. Foreman, the county attorney, just said the chart in the backup material is wrong. Now, you just said, I don't know, is it right or is it wrong? I'm trying to figure out what's going on here. All I would like to know is, single-family assessment, what is the proposed rate and why is it wrong? I mean, is this an NGN thing or?
So it's, it's, I, I, I guess it's a miscommunication. I don't know. Okay, so my understanding is that the preliminary rate resolution was supposed to reflect the upper bounds of what the board could do during the budget process. Instead of it reflecting the upper bounds, it reflects the actual assessment.
So.
And when they adopt the budget, they're gonna be able to come down off that number. But if they don't put the upper bound on, they cannot increase above the actual assessment.
I understand, thank you, Mr. Foreman. I understand that. So the proposed rate that, I'm not sure if it's in the backup material or not right now because I haven't scooted down on this, but I'm looking at.
It is in there.
Mr. Kraus's information is three oh one ninety. That, that's the correct chart.
Maximum. That's the maximum.
I get it. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the chart is there. Okay, thank you very much.
I, I was, I seen it in here. I, I thought, I understood.
Yeah, I saw it in there too, but when I heard that it was wrong, then I.
But then I'm looking at what I wrote down, and it's exactly what I wrote down.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
David, wasn't this, uh, wasn't the research, uh, the study done on this, the results coming this last year, is that correct?
Correct, we did the study last fiscal year.
Right. And then how, how many years prior to that was it that we did?
About five. We usually do them every five years.
Okay. Well, you know, you're looking at a thirty-one dollar increase, you know, on the, we'll just use the single family, the one you're gonna get the majority of the calls from. Uh, you know, so, uh, I would simply make the motion to, uh, for the resolution to accept the three oh one ninety as a maximum rate, and then when we get in the budget, we can, you know, talk about how we want to escalate that into that point, and then we'll come up with our number. But I, I understand totally, uh, as all before, you gotta set your maximum rate, and you can always come down, you know? But beware, you're gonna get calls, so we'll just be in a position. And I'm sure Jeff would get overwhelmed with the calls too, and of course, he'll have to handle that most definitely.
So I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
I want to make sure people understand, it's it and to set it at three oh one ninety. It's just setting a maximum rate of that, and then we'll do what we want to do.
We can do a rollback rate also.
We can roll back off.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the key word for anybody dealing with a constituent is this is the preliminary step. This is not the final rate resolution. There will be an adjustment down.
Jeff, you might want to put a recording on your thing, or else you gotta just switch it over there.
Jeff probably gets more calls than we do.
Really, it's the same thing you do every year with the military. It's the same thing. I mean, you do it every year with the military, military also. Okay, Davis, let's move forward.
So the next thing is an economic development incentive, uh, request, uh, for Project Blue Skies. This is a, um, basically a rehabilitation hospital. Um, they want to build a twenty-four million dollar building, which is forty-five thousand square feet. They'll employ seventy-five people, or the equivalent of seventy-five people, and the average wage for this facility is seventy-two thousand. Doctors, nurses, uh, all kinds of medical professionals. It did go before the Economic Development Advisory Board on June twelfth, and they voted to, uh, unanimously to approve the assessment, or the abatement, excuse me. The, no, actually, it was a, um, rebate.
Jennifer, did you want to speak on this, or you? Okay, I, I think you're not, I guess, yeah.
Positive.
Yep. All right.
But it is a rebate, not an abatement, so. They have to, it is a rebate, not an abatement, so they have to pay the taxes first and then rebate it back.
Okay. All right, uh, motion.
I'll make a motion. Yeah.
Got a motion, second? Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Can I ask, I want to ask one more question. Where's that gonna be located?
Are we able to say?
It's okay if you can. Okay. Don't worry about it.
Don't worry about it. I don't want to know nothing I ain't supposed to know.
All right.
All right, so the next one is Resolution Number 2023 R 41, Extension of the Assessment Roles. This is something we pretty much do every year because the Value Adjustment Board cannot meet sooner. And so we're asking to extend, allow the tax collector to extend the final roles till after the Value Adjustment Board meets.
Move to Doc Resolution Number 2023 R. Back to F 41.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed lights sign? Motion carries.
And then finally, firefighter cancer decontamination grant from the state fire marshal. Our department's just requesting the board approve their application. If we do move forward with the application, we will budget the match in next year's budget. The match could be $2,912.72. What it is, is it's easiest way to describe it, it's a giant washing machine for turnout here. So that when you go out to a fire, you got all that contamination on you. You can clean it all off and so you don't spread that contamination. We have several around the county. This would be located at the left, Lake Jeffrey Station, once, once we build that station.
A move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Before we vote, I want to say something. I, I found something out yesterday that I had, I thought was, I, I never even knew they had such thing. But we have a fire truck, a tanker truck that has a tank on the side of it. So when you get to a fire, you could lay that tank down off the side, fill that tank up with water, dust it real fast. And they could pump out that tank toward the fire, on the fire while that truck's going back to refill. I mean, I, I thought that was a, I thought that was amazing that they could do, I mean, they, they come up with all kinds of stuff for this fire.
Something every day?
Yeah, exactly. Uh, got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed lights sign? Motion carries.
So on the additional items, we had reclassification of the position of the extension, extension agent two and extension agent three, two extension agent three. Basically, UF just suddenly notified us that one of our extension agents received the qualifications and is promoted from a two to a three. Before we can pay her for that position, our portion of it, because they get paid a portion and UF pays a portion, we have to create the authorization for the three. So we got it this week. If we don't do it today, she doesn't get paid and you can't pay back pay and just so the easiest thing was to bring it to you and say, can we go ahead and increase the authorization for Agent Three and reflect her accomplishments.
A move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed lights sign? Motion carries.
So the justice grant that's being requested by the Lake City, this is the next time, the justice grant that's being requested by City of Lake City Police Department, it is due prior to the end of the month, which is why they brought it to us this week and said, please, can you vote on it to support it? It helps them with their grant application. This is to buy police equipment, uh, a container unit and some other equipment that, uh, that feels critical to their mission.
All forward. They get a motion, motion.
A move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed lights sign? Motion carries.
And the next item is the chairman updating on the utility committee.
I think I probably might have told you all at last meeting, but, uh, you know, we have a meeting with the town of Fort White August the 11th. David, where is that meeting going to be at? Have we determined yet?
It is at the TDC meeting, TDC Economic Development Conference.
Okay, so it's going to be at TDC. I thought so.
It's in the morning.
Yeah. And, uh, anyway, we got a meeting on the 11th. Oh, and I think I told you all last meeting, if I didn't. Uh, the utility board has voted out there probably read in the paper to, uh, go ahead and form an independent regional utility. And, uh, that's what we're trying to move forward with also. So basically, you'd have a five-member board that made decisions for the utility, vote, make decisions. Uh, how that board would be appointed, it's going to be in the agreement, gets, gets, uh, wrote up, so. But, uh, hopefully we have that available to look at and vote on at the August 11th meeting.
No, it's going to be a meeting. An actual meeting.
It's going to be a meeting, a workshop, a meeting. We call it a meeting, so most boards will have the authority to vote. It will be advertised. Um, hopefully we get a lot of stuff accomplished at that meeting, a lot of answers. Questions answered and, uh, we can move forward with, uh, with all the utility stuff and some other issues that with the town. Uh, any questions about that? All right.
And finally, Mr. Chair, the last addition was the budget workshop dates. Uh, we were going to, we're requesting the board meet in budget workshops at 9:30 in the morning on August 10th and August 17th.
August 10th and 17th?
Yes. Um, August 10th is between meetings. August 17th will be the morning before an evening meeting. That then leaves the following week in case there's any additional changes. Call a third workshop if necessary.
August 10th and then we have the 11th thing and then what's the?
Right, the purpose, as, uh, Mr. Fergie reminded me, is to try and capture everything you need to do in the workshops in the two meetings, but have room to add a third if the board chooses.
David, have Ellen send out.
10th and 17th.
Have Ellen send out advice to all these meetings. With the commissioners.
Of course, I, I'm requesting the board approve that those dates are okay with you.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with those dates. Anybody else have?
Those will be at 9:30 in the morning here.
Okay, can I get a motion for that?
A move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed lights sign? Okay, Davis, we got that.
And then you'll see in your packet, uh, included just for informational purposes, the DR 420, which is how we certify the tax rolls, uh, as certified by the property appraiser and us, uh, with the tax rate being the same as it is in the current year. No change to the tax rate. It does indicate what the rollback rate would be. Of course, those will also be in the advertisements that we have to do every year according to the trim notices. This was just so you knew how much value, uh, we'll be basing our ad valour taxes.
Chairman, sorry. David.
Yes.
When you start doing information for the budget, budget workshop, I want the percentage. Each side, every budget request, I want to know what that percentage is over last year's budget. Understand what I'm asking?
Yes. Also.
David, if I may, because that's a great idea, Ron, if I could, I'd like to add a little bit of cream to that. Uh, let, let's, uh, give us a five-year span too. The increase over the last five years. Kind of puts it in, that's a good idea, Ron, but that kind of puts it, you know, on the actual line, but it puts the whole show in the perspective there. That's, that's a good idea. I like that.
Okay. And, um, just so you know, on the agenda for the first meeting in August, which is the morning meeting, that is the meeting that the auditor is coming to do the presentation of the auditor, audit. And that will be followed by Mr. Powell presenting to you the revenue forecast.
David.
The first meeting in August.
Sorry. David, uh, out of these two scheduled dates, when will the constitutionals be bringing their budget to us?
First one.
The 10th?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote on that?
Offits on the second one.
That is information only. We don't need to vote on that, I don't think.
No, that was just information.
Yeah, okay. Any more questions? All right, we're going to go to our open public comment. Three minutes. Anybody? Any comments? Come on up.
Hi there. Terry Rasmussen, Woodsboro North. That's why I'm here. Just want to go over again, we're over a year into, um, our, our problems and all that's been really done, I think I mentioned last time, is the skim of the ditches. That's it. Um, and I don't want you all to forget that there was a report from Daniel Craps that he put out that had a lot of things that should have been done. And you all, if not all of you, I know some of you read it, so you are aware of what should be done. And that should be on record. I'm going to make that on record today if it's not. Uh, we had a bad rainstorm the other day. Four inches happened like real quick in two hours and the, the culverts had water about five inches above the entrances of the culverts. So water wasn't flowing real well. We have the north end and the east, the east end that aren't connecting to Phase Two. So that water really goes nowhere and that seems to be a problem. That's not being, uh, they're not even looking at that. We keep mentioning it. No one does anything about it. Also, the, um, face, uh, face two, we, the water port front, front pond. We're still, a lot of it's happened with the front pond. North Florida did not, um, give the correct, um, uh, measurements for it when they did all their work, so that's a big discrepancy, so they're going to make it bigger. So we're waiting on that final report to make that bigger. But what's taken so long? We're on 30 days, uh, Swanee reviews, 90 days, North Florida gets to get back with them. So that's taken a lot of time. I think we're on our fourth or fifth, 30 days, 90 days. We're on our 90 days right now, ends up in August, and then they've got a 30-day response. But a lot of it, I want you to know, has a lot to do with North Florida professional service discrepancies. Can't seem to, to get right to where they want to be with where Swanee wants them to be. So I want that on record and let you know that's what's taking so much time. And that's pretty much it. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else?
I just gave to her what I'm going to read to you. I have to read because I won't stay on track. So, good evening, Chairman Ford and members of the board. Uh, my name is Nancy Turner. I am a homeowner at Woodboro North in Columbia County. I'm here to summarize my comments made at the Water Management District Monthly Board Meeting on July 11th, 2023 concerning the proposed modification of the expired permit issued in February 2008 to Robert Jordan to build the infrastructure at the then Turkey Creek subdivision. In the past month, I have been deep diving into Swanee River Water Management Rules and Florida statutes. My mind feels numbed by all my discoveries, but I can say with confidence the permit issued to Mr. Robert Jordan expired on February 12th, 2013. If you disagree, the project was unarguably abandoned per ERP applicant's handbook, page 88, 6.4, and Florida statute 3.373.426. The outcome would have essentially been the same as an expired permit until a new permit was applied for. But the developer lived by his own rules. Mr. Jordan was allowed to ignore another rule found on page 88, 6321 when in January 2020, he began selling portions of the subdivision to private investors and quit claiming ponds to the Turkey Creek HOA without notifying the district. That infraction alone should have prevented the travesty called Woodboro North. Most importantly, I'm here today to talk about the impact in my home. My husband cannot understand why so much of my time is spent studying the history of Turkey Creek and now the laws to prevent the likes of Woodboro North. And at times, he feels like I have abandoned him. My husband, Bob, has been diagnosed with dementia. This is a private matter. I don't generally broadcast publicly. Bob just wanted us, just wanted to get us into a lower maintenance home as we grew older together or if we were left to grow older alone. I need to spend every moment with him, making memories and experiencing what we can while we can. The clock is ticking. I have spent time I cannot afford trying to right the wrongs of others, which affects my quality of life. My friend and neighbor Terry Rasmussen's health in the relation, and her relationship has also been impacted by the stress of, stress of living in the ill-gotten Woodboro North. I will remain vigilant to see that the final decisions are made with mindful consideration uh, for the homeowners of Woodboro North. Without naming them, there are people on this board that have led me to conclude that Woodboro North cannot be retrofixed. It is time that the Water Management District and the county begin to explore how our properties can be purchased back from us for every dollar we have in them. I understand buyer beware. Allowing a build out on an expired permit is not in the rules. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else?
The chairman.
That's right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead and push.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
When you present all these things as one rule, what do they tell you?
Nothing, nothing. They just thank me. Nothing. And they, um, they, I think after, uh, the little to do with, um, Charlie Sessions, is that his name? Larry Sessions, um, they just don't talk to us at all. Now they're, now they just don't want to say anything that can be repeated, I guess, or whatever, or misconstrued or, or whatever. They don't, they just don't respond.
What, what do you, what, you said they, to do with Larry Sessions? I know he's on the board, but.
Well, he made a comment to us several meetings ago indicating that the root problem was with Columbia County. And so.
Columbia County?
Yeah. And so when Terry came back, Ms. Rasmussen came back to reiterate that comment here, um, what she said here got played at the next, um, board meeting at Swanee River, and I don't know how many of you all are aware of that. She was humiliated for nine minutes in front of that board while they played the videotape of her saying those things. And they, and when she has tried to publicly uh, exonerate herself by playing the recording that has Charlie Sessions or Larry Sessions saying that, they shut her down. So, now this undoubtedly will be played at their next meeting. So tune in. You all watch those meetings? Have you, do you all ever watch the board meetings at the Water Management District?
It's been a while for me.
Okay, well, you can go back in and, and, and watch a few when Terry and I are talking. If you like. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
So they played the, they played the, a recording back of her.
Mm-hmm, the, yes.
And what was the, what was, what was the reason for that? What was the comp, the undercomp?
I have no idea. It was, um, it was a decision made by their executive director and I'll never understand why he thought that was a wise decision, a wise move. He, oh, he said that she took it out of context and all she was doing was repeating what Larry Sessions said. He said it twice in that meeting. Thank you.
More questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh. Nobody? Martin, you got anything?
No, sir.
Motion. Yep. Yep. Joe?
No, sir.
David, you got anything to add?
Uh, just a reminder that I will be on vacation, the board approved my vacation for next week.
You ain't got time to take no vacation.
I will be working remotely.
All in favor, vote no.
I'll be, I'll be working remotely.
Mr. Kraus's cell phone number is.
David, you got any next?
All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
A move.
We are adjourned.